All right, ready whenever you are.
Call meeting going up.
We're good.
We're doing budget meetings. Budget meetings, why, the United States of America. The Republic of America, or just end. Nation, I don't know. In the middle. Be, that's the goal. Welcome, everybody. Good to see you, Gary. Good to see everybody else. Everybody have a good Christmas. Probably glad it's over with, just like. I am.
That's, that's my pocket.
Yep. Uh, make a motion to approve the manifest dated December twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. In the amount of two hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Uh, correction.
What did I say?
I said five fifty-seven.
Eight fifty-seven. Two ninety-two, eight fifty-seven, eighty-eight.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Right?
Aye.
The school payment in there. Uh, make a motion to approve the work session minutes of November twenty first.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Right? And I make a motion to approve the selectmen's minutes dated November twenty eighth.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Right? And the selectmen's minutes and make a motion to approve them on December twelfth meeting.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Right?
Aye.
Uh, we don't have any appointments. Nobody's here, so. Um. In the mail, um. We got notice from the state for our share of the rooms and meal packs for a hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty cents. Good little Christmas present. Um. Caitlin, you have anything?
Um, the only thing I have is, uh, just for next week where town offices will close Monday, January first.
Okay. Uh, Leo, you got anything? I'm good. Chris?
I'll try to make this fast.
Okay.
Work continues from the storm damage they were working today, um. On roads that, uh, they graded what they could last week and things as they, while they thought we were gonna, we anticipated in freezing up. So they saved some of the washout things, uh, for this week. And they're gonna be working on that and picking up brush and, uh, addressing the potholes on Pine River Road and. Champion Hill Road, and hopefully this road out here has a few. Um, if anybody else sees any drastic potholes and paved roads that I missed, please send me an email or shoot me a text message or something. Uh, it actually doesn't. Yes, um. I did wanna just mention that I did put barricades up on Wilkson Swamp Road. I came here last Tuesday. And took them from the shed and signage and barricades because the road flooded either side of Wilkson Brook. And, uh, created a, a very deep washout area, so not safe for travel. Technically, as of December tenth. The road is not maintained by the town until April first and techni- and would be closed, uh, normally in winter months, because there'd be snowbanks there or whatever, but. Given the winter conditions run any, so, uh, the barricades were necessary. Unfortunately, they didn't stay. Um, so this is gonna be my plea as one of the board of selectmen. There's always chatter and plenty of talk. From the, uh, keyboard warriors out there about, uh, the things we failed to do as selectmen. Um, so get the word out that, uh, the, those are. Those are bought with taxpayer money. So it may be funny to some people, but to, uh, take those things and deposit them elsewhere. One of the barricades, I got it done in Champion Hill Road when I was there Sunday. Uh, cleaning out the swale, um, on Champion Hill Road to make sure that the water stayed in the ditch and stopped freezing on the road. One of the barricades was placed there, so I was able to recover that, but, uh. Um, and I found another one in the woods, but the rest of them, uh, unless, uh, somebody's brought them back are gone. Um. From the storm damage, I would like to recognize a couple of people that, and I'm sure that there are people I don't know about, and I thank you for, uh, volunteering and getting out there and helping, but. Tim Murphy was, uh. Instrumental in helping open up a couple of roads with his chainsaw the day of the storm. He cut out some trees. And David Abbott, who does happen to work for our summer road contractor, took it upon himself as a resident of this town. And, uh, he started the diversion of the water back into the ditch on Champion Hill Road, and then I finished it. So I wanna recognize both those down and thank them for, uh, taking the time volunteering to help out the town. And we'll continue to say as long as, uh, we have people continue to do that, that's, uh, that's money saved for this town. Um. We can't ask people to do that, but if you're willing to do that, it's, it's great and it's a savings to the town. That's all I have.
Okay, um. So that was the barricade, one of the barricades.
It was.
You saw that. And I don't think Ron ever gave any signs from. Molly Tobler, probably either. Uh, I think maybe the snowmobile club might have had them.
I, I don't believe so. I think they were gone before they fixed it, and I was able to, uh, find a couple of signs, I.
Are they gonna be able to get it, right? Groom us through Wilkson Swamp, or are we gonna fix that too?
Well, if we get snow, they should be able to.
Yeah.
You know.
Cause they'll probably.
It is pretty.
Probably be screaming about that.
And to be honest, we did the last couple of times I've been there, it was the water going through it to the downed town, so.
Pretty soft, there it was.
Yeah.
Good, uh, Kyle.
I got stats for November. If anybody would like a copy, there are some extras here. Uh, it's a pretty busy month for us for investigation purposes. I know of at least a couple that we were tied to our desk for pretty much a week straight. Staring at a computer screen, which is not fun for us at all. Um. So calls for service are two hundred and forty-eight. We had three arrests. Only thirty-four motor vehicle stops, which is a drop from what it normally is at, but that equates us having to sit at our desks and. Be on our computer, working investigations on the phone. We had three motor vehicle accidents and the K nine was deployed three times, and I speak to two of those were for drugs nesting. One was for a track from a burglary. Any more questions? Um.
Were there, was the track successful?
Uh, it wasn't till it stopped where the person that got picked up by a car.
No.
So. Half-successful.
Yeah.
We were on it till we weren't, because there was nothing else to follow.
And the drugs were successful?
Successful.
Yeah, yeah.
So she continues to work hard. We're, her and I, working hard every week training and. She continues to put out results.
Tell her, thank you very much.
Yes, I will. Anything else?
And you're, you're still working with Germany?
I'm still working with it. Like I said, I just sent him a message while we're sitting here, because I knew it would come up.
Yeah.
So it's not like he's fighting, he's not fighting us on it, it's just. See how long I can push it out.
Yeah.
I still continue to pester him at least once a week. So I'm gonna keep trying tonight. Maybe we'll try to explore some other avenues. I don't know what I can do.
Did, uh, Noel, did he?
I'm gonna reach back out to Noel. He'd been in the hospital.
Oh.
Having some heart issues, so he's out now. So I'm gonna reach back out to him and see if maybe he can help a little bit.
A little pressure.
Yeah. A little more pressure.
Yeah, we said plenty of time.
Yes, absolutely. I hundred and ten percent agree.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Announcements is just the Monday, the town office closes Monday.
Yep.
And the transfer station is closing at noon on Sunday or not?
No. No, only Christmas Eve and on New Year's Eve.
I thought the signs said Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. Anybody else see that?
One hundred and eighty, one hundred percent sure.
On the sign as you exit, then they say Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. Closing at noon?
No, no, it's just Christmas Eve.
I'm gonna tell her that.
I will tell. Yeah. No, it's, uh. It's not a. Holiday, holiday, uh, perk. Just for Christmas Eve. Yeah, no thoughts there. Not, no. Okay, public comment. Open it up, public comment. Anybody has anything?
I have a question.
Yep.
I'd like to know, what's that, Garrett Jewell, Champion Road? I'd just like to know my date of times and have a property today, taking pictures of my junk. Not my house, I thought I let him on a property, I thought he was taking some assessing pictures or something. That's taking pictures all around, yeah, because I have a clutter. Everyone knows that. Other people do, too. I just like to know, and he said this one was the same thing. That's true.
I didn't send him.
Yeah, we did send him.
Did he call and make an appointment?
No, I was driving home. I come up to my driver on the road, and it started going very slow, looking. Finally stopped, pulled his window down, said, uh, you know, asked a question of telling me Champion Road or. And why, why, you know, I told him, and he said, oh, here, just to take some pictures for the clutter. No, it was, he just said he had to take some pictures, I know. So I figured, you know, it's just an assessing.
Yeah.
And then after said, I said, you just taking pictures of junk, he said, yeah. And I said, uh. See what the slum was saying. No.
No.
What, has there been complaints?
Not that I know of. Well, I'll talk going tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't remember that.
Yeah, they're supposed to, they're supposed to notify the property owners, make an appointment to.
Yeah.
Probably, but. But you allow them on it, right?
Well, yes, but, but he was in the road when he was taking pictures. No, he got off, he parked in my driveway, and he got out, so he came in the driveway, started taking pictures.
Before he got, gained permission from you?
I gave him permission because I thought he was there to do assessing. I don't know if he does it in.
But let me ask a question. When you gave him permission, was it on the road or in your property?
On the road, and he said, I gotta pull off. Park, get off, off the road, it's like that. I thought you nothing to it, till he didn't take picture of the house. That's a little odd.
Yeah.
I know.
We didn't, we didn't send him.
All right, well, that's good to know, but these things have gone.
I'll talk with him like tomorrow.
Years. Of, about, uh, forty years ago, I think it was, I had a similar problem, I had a couple of extra. Um. Vehicles there. And someone complained, it was a couple with time, two couples in time, complaining about three or four places in town. We went to a slum this meeting, and at that time, Jeanne was one of them, and everyone's hemming and hawing. She said, I love this type of shit, you said. This person and this person complained about you. Basically, that was the way it went. And I'm sure it's, it's the same way now, but you guys didn't hear about it.
We didn't get, we didn't get any complaints.
All right, well, I, I know a junk guy, you gotta have at least two hundred vehicles, okay? Have two hundred, more than two, I have two. I, my, my son has, he's blind, and it's all he has. He has a truck and an old scout in the woods, it's in it. I think it's usually about five. No, it used to be two, unregistered, more than two prostitutes on junk out like.
Right.
But Charlie's a trash, a junk, not trash, just junk. I mean, I understand, I, I agree that I have a lot of junk there. I have two kids who. Walk cars here and there, and they take wheels off, tires off, and things are there, you know, trailers break down. In the process of trying to clean things up, but I don't get ahead of it with them, you know, that way. Wanted to think that my help in this town in general would be to screw something with the tires at the dump. I know you have to pay for tires. We didn't use to, and at one point, that. When you started paying, people started throwing them inside the road. That's usually what happened.
Yeah.
That's something you might think about.
Well, you still throw them up to it.
I see, yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, you know, if they're free, how to still throw them.
Right.
So that was one thing, and I've been wanting to come here for a long time. The other question, I didn't mention Chris at the end, at the end, but. The property owner, it's just like a little update of what that's all about. It's like, probably you're talking to Parkland or someone, I'm not sure of their name.
It's a gated community, so there, there is, um.
Oh, James. Oh, and I did ask Dave Hines about that. I said, what about him? What's going on down there? He said, you can come down, look through the records, they, they rent for every building there. I know, you can't get a permit for anything. But that doesn't make it right that you can have multiple dwellings beyond the mountains, so, yeah, but one house and one ADU. He's got a permit for, I know he did. But he's got five, six houses on there, and he built me another one. And they all have, they all have, uh. Power, you know, uh, meeting bases on houses, they're, they're buildings, they have dwellers of some sort. I'm curious, how many steps does it have, and you know that?
So that. Can I address it? Yeah, you wanna?
No, you can't.
I mean, you didn't mention it, we're gonna look into it, but.
Yeah, Rebecca will have an update with us, because she, because again, we have a policy that you have to make an appointment.
Right.
Before you, whether it's for assessing or a, a violation complaint, uh, the town ordinance or whatever. Um, we still have a policy, you have to make an appointment. That appointment was made. For that property, for the assessing side of it, and for Rebecca, from the zoning side of it. Um, obviously, we don't have building codes, but it's just, you know.
Right.
Um.
Oh, yeah, we have something.
You know, you, you can. You can have a home, you can have an ADU, but we don't have a regulation on how many buildings you can have on your property.
But an ADU, yeah.
But as far as a bathroom, bedroom, things like that, you can only have two, you know, your primary dwelling and an ADU, but. You can put as many buildings, there's no restriction on it. And technically, the new, the largest building that's there. Cause I, I watch that develop every time I go by, that largest building is now tied to the main house, so that makes it a one building. So.
They gotta walkway across it.
Yeah, there's a, there's a breezeway that attaches and stuff. Um, but yeah, it is, I mean, tonight's not the night for Rebecca, to give her a report, um, since last.
Rebecca doesn't know, she can't come on the property.
No, she had an appointment, she has been on the property, we just don't have the update. I believe it happened last Tuesday, so she was here, uh, last Tuesday and did some field stuff. And I believe, I, I, because Tuesdays are the only days that she's here. So I believe it was last Tuesday is when she had the appointment set up.
Yeah.
So. So, so on our next report, and I, I will let you know the next time I see you.
Yeah.
Or being, yeah. Yeah, I have no, and I have the problem with people having all, all they want, but when, when other people can't do what they can do. And they, they can build all they want, because they can afford it. Other people can't. And when other people want to, they just, they can't, you know. Not fair. You know what I'm saying? If they've got five houses, let's just say they have three, that's still not enough. They have seven acres, but. You know. Still, the law is two dwellings per lot. Now. That's, that's all in the spirit of it. And keep hearing those complaints that are about. For my house.
Well, like, like I said, I'll check in with you tomorrow.
Yeah.
Fine, because like I said, we didn't send you.
Yeah. All right. And he has no right to go on and tell the other, you send it to him, right?
No, you, if we, uh, let's say, ask somebody to look, ask Rebecca and I look into it or something, he's, he's got to get permission.
Yeah.
He still has to.
I'll make an appointment.
Right. If you come onto the property and all that, by purpose of the, the visit and all that, they have to provide all that.
Yeah, and you didn't do that till after the fact, so.
Yeah.
And you still didn't tell her why. Instead of selecting. What you put on it.
Yeah, okay. I'll talk going tomorrow.
Very good. And, and you let me know if I know?
Yeah.
Right, good.
And I'm sorry about that.
All right, well, it's not your problem, or your fault.
Well, it is, ultimately, and we.
I mean, he works for us.
We did not directly do that.
Dave, you got anything?
Yeah, Lenny, uh, requires a budget meeting coming up. The only thing left for you guys to approve is forty-nine of one of the marks.
Yeah.
And it's three that you can approve now. You, it's still going that way, and then we can add others as you want, or you can wait till the. Tuesday meeting, and we can do it at that if you want them. I mean, do you want to approve any of those? Because you better need them approved within the next couple of weeks, so we can get the packages together.
What's that next meeting?
Tuesday was in.
Tuesday.
Okay. Next night, but.
Next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, right?
Yeah, that's what, ninth? What's that?
The second.
Second, second.
Second and sixteen is what we get scheduled.
Okay.
Second sixteen, now thirty.
We'll get, uh.
The only ones I know right now that we have is Wrightville Road. The sixty-eight hours, a hundred petition you have to vote on. And the antenna repeater is the only ones I know right now.
Yeah, and we get, um, Caitlin just said Alan checked all the. Signatures on the petition, one for sixty-eight hours, a hundred.
Oh, check them?
Yeah.
So those, those three are the only ones I know, so. Maybe if we have majority of the select one at the meeting, we can approve those if they're good with it.
Yeah, yeah.
And then it's. I mean, I wanna get the, get it printed, because I put pressure on her to get everything printed, so we can have it for the public hearing, which is.
We didn't see the petition, but I don't even know how much they're asking for, but.
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five?
Yeah.
I mean, we just passed it, put Alan to verify the signatures.
Yeah, I'll have a copy of it at the one-two budget meeting, and they're gonna be giving a presentation to us. So it's probably good that we all do it right at the same time.
Yeah.
At the budget meeting, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, they're gonna, that's one of the first things they ask, if they can do a presentation to us in front of it. Okay, I just got some stuff tonight that they emailed me, Caitlin just gave me.
Okay.
That I'll have in the budget package for all of us when, when they come in. Maybe, I don't know, do you hear anything on the antenna repeater? Is that still a good, I mean, Chuck stood to that?
Yeah, we, uh, we talked.
Okay, so that is definitely going.
Yeah, it's, uh, it will be closed up in the tower, so.
Okay, so those three are definite, and then, uh, what about the fire truck one?
That wasn't, you mean changing it?
Well, actually doing the maintenance on it, I know that he was talking about. Looking to spend money to send it off to be refurbished.
Oh, and it's still getting estimates, so.
Don't look like it's gonna be this.
Don't know what it'll be this year.
This budget season, okay. All right. Excellent, okay, so if we can, I just wanted you to know that we get the presentation there.
We could probably do Wrightville Road and, uh.
Sixty-eight hours, a hundred in the antenna.
Yeah.
I think those were the three.
It's those three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did that.
Yeah, we'll do them at the budget meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks. I'll have coffee for you.
Okay. Anything else? Don't you got anything you wanna talk about? ZBA going good?
Well, I, you know, I don't really.
Paul some way?
What petition?
Oh, yeah, I know it.
Probably. Could've been compact.
Yeah. You know what he's talking?
He was talking just the edge of the pavement where it got broken up, yeah.
It must be beaten into the pavement.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, they put stone in there, now the stone dropped down. Lovely, man, it's a little damp. We need to kind of, I think we're trying to get running now.
Well, I noticed the water was running on the road, and had it stoned last week, or Monday, whatever.
Yeah, there's not much there for the ditch. That's the walls where he did.
We moved that wall back.
We did?
Yeah, we moved that wall back. And we moved a bit of ditch, and they should move the wall back under the section.
Yeah. Yeah, we get the door, and the snow.
But they did, they moved the pole.
They did?
Yeah.
I think they're supposed to move rock walls.
Yeah.
They moved a lot of them.
That's been, that's where you rode, didn't it?
Right. You can't, you can't now, you can't move rock walls now, you know? Yeah, you gotta go through the.
Well, it's really, it's not a blast, it's only a single wall.
Something historical.
Single.
From the state.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they pushed that back.
Then the pole lines right there, too, because, so you can't dig out much. You got a ZBA hearing coming up, right? You want to announce that? Thursday? You said?
Third.
Oh, the third.
Wednesday, the third.
Yeah, okay. That's at the school, right?
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything?
Well. There's a public hearing. On the hotel subdivision. On the fourth. We got our posting in, in time. Um, there's a steep slopes application and a continuation of the subdivision. That same night, followed by the. What's it called? What's it abbreviation? Um. Something to do with Mina, the. Yeah? Proceeding, conditions proceeding. It's a redo. Because of improper posting of the last one, so.
That it? Do have, um, going to, really quick, non-public. Um. But we're making, and we won't be doing anything else after that, for the journey.
And public hearing.
Oh, that's right, yeah, get them done now, yeah. Can't do that, too. Five o'clock. So, uh. Thanks for reminding me. Um. I'm not gonna. We do non-public and back out, we do publications, we'll just wait like this. Yeah. Put everybody at ease.
Once I make a phone call tomorrow, make sure that while they have cold patch, I guess taken care of, so. Thank you for reminding me. That's why I put it out there for the public to email me or let me know if there are additional potholes, because. I'm so scatterbrained lately that's, I need all the help I can get, so I appreciate it, so.
Definitely.
But.
Should not deal with.
There? Figure it's a lot of it.
Oh, yeah.
We got a, uh, latest inspection on his vehicle.
I'd like to address that pothole at the top of another road, but I think it's. Too far, things beyond that now. There's a pothole just before the pavement end. But.
I can do that.
Yeah.
Why that class is coming up there is the.
It's.
Used to be the man. I'm blowing down there every morning. Surprised he has not gone off.
As a taxpayer, I'd love to make that public plea, maybe I'll do that right now, or on camera. The amount of people that pick their kids up. And it's, it kinda started, obviously, with COVID. And the buses weren't running, the kids couldn't be on the buses, but. The same amount of buses, the same amount of drivers. And they are having trouble filling, um, positions, obviously, with the driving. Continue the role with minimal kids on them. And I, I'm not really sure what Effingham is, but obviously, where I work, I see it every single day, right across the street at Ospey Central School. Which Ospey's not Effingham, but it's still government, worth still a lot of taxpayer money, but. I. I, I, I got, I got, I guess I'm, I'm glad that the parents and the people are, you know, are. Uh, have the opportunity to do that, to drop their kids off and be more involved in their kids' lives and not have them sitting waiting in the cold or whatever, but. Um, boy, it's, it's an awful lot of, uh, resources that are put out there for minimal, uh, use and, um.
I would agree with you on that, because. They used to run a van. And I don't see very many heads showing when they go spot on ice. And they're going up that back road, which I think is nice.
I, I would love to see a lot of Effingham people at the deliberative session for the school board. I know that we are. Um, small in numbers, but we can be big in voices, but. The, the, the small events that you used to see are transporting single students. To specialized. Education areas throughout the state of New Hampshire. Uh, sometimes Rochester, sometimes Somersworth or further, um. That's, that's a, that's our money, that's taking one, one child and, uh, not to take anything away from children's education, I don't wanna. You know. But, boy, that's a, that's a expensive resource. I mean, they, they did have the Toyota Sienna minivans. You see with the government plates on them that were doing that, which I have to think is gotta be a little bit more, uh. Cost-effective than running one of them fifteen-passenger, twenty-passenger vans, it's. It's gotta be an answer to some savings there somewhere.
Each area do we have it, I think it's four, five, one.
Yeah, so I look for the whole district or just?
No, Effingham. Seventy-nine?
Do you get, do you count the most this year? You get the.
That, the, I haven't gotten the lit, the new list yet.
Oh.
But I have to go based off the old list, but I haven't gotten a look at it, but yeah, that's my.
Was it around two hundred?
No, no, just nothing.
Yeah, total, total.
Yeah, two hundred and fifty-two, I think was the total we had. I think that number's six, man, in that ballpark.
Yeah.
I don't remember how many.
You talking about, just our school?
I don't know how many.
Right, yeah.
Our school.
Right.
Wow, yeah.
Is that?
Yeah.
I think it's about a hundred. Ninety to a hundred.
Yes, with that school.
Yes, that this one, yeah. There's days two hundred and twenty or thirty, something like that, total.
Fifty, whatever, yes, it's in that ballpark. Last number we had, but this new number will be, give us a new update.
But, I mean, it's not just government, it's look at the Socrates bus when it goes by. You'll see two or three heads on that big bus when it goes by.
Like that skid.
Yeah.
It's the same way down south when I go down to my mother's. Middle school down there, they're lined up, and they have them before COVID. You can't even. You can't even get past the elementary school and the Dover Somersworth line, you can't get past it. The parents are out in the road two hours before the kids get out. They're taking a lot of the darkers all the time down there. It's it's just unbelievable. I just the way it is.
Yes, it's a time, so.
A lot of people are scared and leaving their kids to worry about. You know, don't wanna be bullied on the bus.
Now you can get a public hearing uh to say he's receives an expense on unanticipated funds. Uh the first one is a. Highway uh one-time highway payment. In the amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and forty cents. I make a motion that we accept that money.
A second.
Then moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody have any problems with that?
Mission one.
Well, there's no discussion all in favor.
Aye.
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 And the second one is um. Make a motion for the one-time bridge payment in the amount of nineteen thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and forty-five cents.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any discussion?
Where where is that coming from?
State.
State.
Yeah, both of them come from the state.
That's one thing, Lenny, that maybe we could, we could take that nineteen thousand dollars and put it into the bridge fund. You could make a warrant article to do that. If you wanted to. Or we could do what we're doing now.
Caitlin, Caitlin, Caitlin asked me and I said, I think we'd have to do a warrant article to put it in.
Or we could just take it like we're doing this time because we're putting some money in the under reserve, so someone asked, we could say that because we're also conceiving that funds.
Yeah.
Whether you wanted to handle it.
So nobody's got any issues with accepting it?
No.
Call and favor, say aye.
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 Uh get that over.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, I make a motion to go into non-public. Under RSA ninety-one A three two C, correct? And like I said, people won't do anything else after that. Thank you, everybody, to.
Good night, gentlemen.
Make a motion with mine and on public.
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same as ours.
Uh minutes probably. Keep them sealed for. Six months, so can you make them kind of generic? You can probably make them generic.
So we we choose them not to seal?
Yeah, not sealing. Yeah, yeah, because that's. Yeah.
Got the comp, I agree, right? We got the closure report for what I started saying earlier, when I talked to Dawson, the closure report for Baylor Road Bridge. We did receive that before the end of the year.
All right.
Maybe you can put that in the file here or?
I do have it all printed, so I am planning to put it in the file.
Any questions that drove, whatever.
Okay, anybody got any? Motion?
Make a motion, we jerk.
No, it's like that. Call and favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.